Fall tonight.
Yeah, Paul. So thank you Carly for that. All right. I will then call to order the Wednesday, January 27th. A public meeting of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission. I'll start off by reading the notice that we're all used to now. The meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, section 2.2, that 37 big dot two in state and local legislation to allow for government operation during the COVID-19. All participating members of the planning commission will be present at this meeting through electronic means and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/peace. Public comments will be accepted electronically until the end of the public hearing. Please submit those comments via email to plan@fallschurchva.gov. And just that quick reminder I give everyone, um, just make sure you're muted unless you plan to talk. That helps us avoid problems with echo and it makes it easier for whoever is speaking. Um, during discussions, I will check on your mute status. If you're unmuted, I'll assume you want to talk or if you use a little raised hand feature of Microsoft Teams, I will try to call on you and then just make sure you unmute and talk. Someone on staff may be muting you if it looks like they think you should be muted and you forgot. So, um, before you speak, just double check that you're unmuted. And then you can speak. And with all of that out of the way, Ms. Bazemore, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Rankin.
I'm here.
Mr. Krasner.
Here.
Ms. Teetz.
Here.
Mr. Pontez.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Weiss.
Here.
And Ms. Coman.
Here. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you for that. Uh, as you mentioned before, uh, Mr. Stoddard's under the weather. Um, so he is not here, but Ms. Aubrey is here to, um, help us out in this meeting. And Paul said he expects to be back. We have another meeting next week. So if we do have things that come up in this meeting that we really want his input on, he will be here next week. Um, but with that out of the way, I need a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So move.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Pontez and a second from Ms. Weiss. Uh, could you call a vote? Please, Ms. Bazemore.
Yes, Chair Rankin.
Yeah.
Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Ms. Teetz.
Yes.
Mr. Pontez.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
Ms. Coman.
Yes.
Alrighty. Uh, we do not have a speaker series tonight. That's item four, item five. Do we have any petitions for items not on the agenda?
No.
We do not. Excellent. So now we are into our action items. Uh, number six on the agenda. The first thing up is the annual report, which we looked at last time. I think we had a few, um, adjustments that we wanted made. And I think this is where we checked that those have been made and, and I think vote to approve the annual report. Is that right?
Yeah. So as part of this item, we've also drafted up, um, a brief staff report, um, summarizing the 2021 priorities that you guys submitted. So as part of this, I'll review the staff report for the annual report as well as the 2021 priority staff report.
That sounds great. And also for what it's worth, one of my suggestions for our priorities would be, you know, I feel like, um, the schedule's a little bit weird now with this annual report and our advance coming up and setting our priorities. So one of the things I think we can, the priorities that we talked about, um, today can maybe inform our advance that we'll have soon. And then maybe during that advance, we could talk about tweaking the order of events on this sort of thing going forward so that in future years, it all lines up a little bit better. But Ms. Bazemore, if you want to take it away, that'd be great.
Yeah, of course. And that sounds good. We can add some language in about revisiting during the advance. And but I'll start with the staff report. So the request before you guys tonight, um, is to discuss the priorities for the 2021 calendar year and approve the draft 2020 annual report to council. Um, staff recommends that the planning commission conduct a final review of the draft report and identify your priorities for the 2021, um, or for 2021 in the draft report. And the background section, I included a little chart that kind of summarizes the changes that were made to the documents since the last time you guys saw it. Um, so I'm just going to run through that really quickly. Um, on page one, we replaced the old city hall with a picture of, um, Mr. Brown's Park, the mural there. Um, I can't find a good picture of the new city hall. So TBD when we will switch that out, um, in the future. And on page three, a language added regarding COVID and your PC operations and business. And page six, under assignments to boards, commissions and committees, uh, Mr. Rankin is noted as having made the appointments rather than Mr. Wadiska. And finally, again, on page six, um, we've added some screenshots of virtual meetings, um, to depict COVID times. Alright, and I'm going to hop to the priorities staff report. Um, so there's no proposed motion. Basically, your priorities are going to be incorporated into the draft annual report that you're voting on tonight. Um, and that's going to be adopted by a separate op- or action. And so the request is to identify your 2021 priorities for inclusion in the annual report. Many of you submitted, I think, five out of seven of you guys have submitted priorities, but, um, we can use tonight to discuss more. Um, so going into some background, you guys have seen the city council work plan that was adopted on November 23rd and it's included as an attachment. Um, I can pull that up later if you want to run through it. But planning commission is identified, um, as either the leader or the co-leader on, on several items. Include the West End and field development equity, COVID response, preserving existing affordable housing, preserving existing affordable dwelling units, um, our partnership with Virginia Tech, sidewalk plans, protected bike lanes, public art, um, South Washington pedestrian improvements, walkable Broad Street, emergency, emergency preparedness and, um, the community facilities and utilities plan. Um, this chart right here goes into the items listed above and their status and how CPADS is going to be tackling them in the future. Alright, and then getting into some of the priorities that you guys have submitted via email. Um, there were two that were very common, um, throughout the group and they are of course, housing affordability and diversity. And then equity and social justice. Um, specifically, how can the planning commission promote these issues through housing and transportation in the city? Um, we also had interest in the following items. Um, those related to long range planning. We're, um, producing and adopting a climate risk plan, um, completing small area plans and reviewing adopted small area plans. Um, and then continuing to update our comprehensive plan. Uh, then going into zoning and entitlements. Um, we saw the review of entitlements and site plan details of mixed use applications. Um, this would include West Falls Church as well as Broad and Washington. Um, and then zoning ordinance review, basically evaluating current zoning practices in the city concerning single family areas within the city and looking, um, for opportunities to promote gentle density as well as improved environmental performance. Um, and then finally getting into some transportation related issues. Uh, we saw, uh, pedestrian safety and traffic calming expressed throughout the group, uh, sidewalk connectivity, um, improved bicycle infrastructure. Um, and here we're talking about evaluating streets that could be potential candidates for bicycle boulevards or neighborhood greenways, um, increasing bicycle racks and producing a map of existing, um, bicycle rack locations. And then repaving and continued maintenance on existing bicycle lanes in the city. And further promoting the use of our capital bike share, which is a great asset to the city. And that's all for that staff report. Um, if you want to start discussing the priorities you've submitted or any that you may have thought of in the meantime, um, we can use that time now.
Okay. Thanks for that. Uh, it was actually really nice to see you, um, sort of break down our, um, priorities based on those different angles, you know, like what council says and what we thought and stuff like that. Um, it just so we're clear, we've got the draft annual report. And I think the bulk of it, we reviewed last time and made those few changes of the outline. And then there's just a section on page 15 at the very end where we need to talk tonight, try to come up with some priorities that we want to include in that. And if we can come to agreement on that, we could pass this report. And then in the coming weeks, I will present it to city council. Right?
Uh, that is correct. Yes.
All right. Great. So what do people think about what we should list in our annual report about our priorities for 2021? Anybody? Mr. Stevens.
Do you see us having a limit on this? Are you thinking perhaps that we go through this list and, and, uh, pick out maybe just a few of these? Or do we have the option of just going ahead and including all of these?
Well, we could do a hierarchy. So maybe putting, um, the issues that you guys are most concerned with focusing on at the top. And I can note that in the report. And then, um, towards the bottom, other issues. But maybe housing and equity go at the very top and then, um, the other issues are kind of listed as they are in the staff report at the bottom. But I, I don't see a limit, um,
Yeah.
priorities.
I think it's sort of up to us. I mean, this is going to this annual report, which city council in theory will review. And obviously it's a public document. So anyone wanting to check in on, but I also do think, um, while we're going to talk about the priorities a little bit tonight, I think when we do our advance, um, in a few weeks, whenever that is next in March, maybe, um, we, we can, I don't think we'll be bound exactly by the priorities that we set tonight. I think it's always, uh, up to us to re-adjust, re-tweak our priorities. So, but I think that approach that you laid out there, Ms. Bazemore, to kind of pick the high level ones and list them as kind of the main priorities. And then we can include all kinds of stuff below that. Mr. Pontez, you're, you're unmuted. Do you have a thought?
No, I, I support that. I think, I, I don't think there's anything clearing that's missing from this list personally. I do think the priorities around housing affordability and equity and social justice as top line items make sense. And then having the rest of them, um, included, I think is a, is a, is an appropriate way to go.
Yeah, I certainly didn't see anything listed in the priorities that I disagree with, like that I think we shouldn't prioritize. And I personally, um, agree with that as the top item. I do think, you know, environmental things are probably something we need to start prioritizing as well, but.
This, this is Carly. Um, I guess my one suggestion would be if you're doing a hierarchy, um, try to kind of marry as much as possible to what's in the council work plan, um, for the coming year, just so that there's, you know, there's already known support from the council level that might be easier to prioritize those things for you guys for the next year. So that would be my thought.
Have they ranked their priorities or is it, is it just this, is it this list on the first page?
Um, well, in the work plan, it's, yeah, they haven't really ranked anything as far as I know. Um, that work plan has quite the extensive list. Um, and actually I think most of the stuff on your all's list is pretty much on their work plan. So I think it, so it's probably a kind of a good concerted effort that matches up. Um, but I'm just thinking from a kind of council support and staffing, if those things are already on the work plan, that's, that's easier to kind of get started on.
I, I, I think that makes sense. I also think, um, you know, there's, uh, you know, there's some priority items that are very specific, actionable things, you know, concrete things. And then there are, um, I would sort of say like, you know, housing affordability and diversity, like, that's not a concrete actionable thing at this point. I think it's a priority that we're going to spend time converting that into actionable things. But there's also, you know, the, the city council work plan has a lot of very specific things. And I also just a reminder, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think last year we came up with maybe five or six priorities and we, I think purposely didn't put them in a, in an order. Is that right? I feel like we talked about that and decided just to list them and not try to order them.
Yes, that's correct.
I don't know how well that worked, but. Ms. Weiss.
How does city council use this document?
Our.
How do we use that? I mean, who, who uses this and for what?
The annual report.
I mean, after we put our priority, I mean, I know what happens. You're going to present the, the annual report to city council, but, um, I mean, our, our, our work plan will be refined and more detailed in our advance, right? I'm just, I mean, I just, I guess I'm just going back to your earlier point, Andy, that this is sort of a starting point, right? And not the end all.
Yeah, I, this, I don't, I think this is most, I mean, the, the annual report, I think serves two purposes. One is sort of captures for history, what we achieved in the previous year. And then this very end part of our priorities is, is a signal to city council what we think is important. But obviously we have many opportunities over the course of the year to reiterate that to them. So I, you know, I don't know that we need to spend a ton of time tonight. I mean, debating the exact details of how we describe our priorities, um, for this document, but I guess that, I guess my question based on what, uh, Ms. Aubrey said, you know, do we list priorities that tie into actions that city council has listed in their work plan? Or are we listing higher level priorities? Like, hey, we want to spend, you know, energy this year looking at housing affordability and diversity and equity and social justice. Those are important things. You know, we're going to try to look at a lot of things through those lenses. You know, I mean, like that, I'm sure that lines up with city council's overall priority, but it's not as clear how that ties into the East End area plan or infill development, you know, these other specific things they have listed. Mr. Stevens, you have your fake hand up.
Yeah, I, I would agree that the, uh, those top two bullets are really kind of more of a general lens. And, um, you know, maybe you could, uh, uh, kind of explain that in your talk to city council, but pretty much everything we do going forward this year will work through these two bullets just to make sure that we're aligned with the, with city council. And then some of these other things are specific items that we see now, but they're subject to change depending on the course of events. Of course, in many instances, uh, people bring things to us and that, that kind of drives our agenda as well. It's, you can't always predict that, uh, in January of the year.
Very true, especially in, uh, these unpredictable times that we live in, unfortunately. That seem to be unpredictable, at least for the next, I don't know, six to eight months, if we're lucky. Um, Ms. Weiss, your fake hand is up, but I don't know if that was from before when you were talking.
No, it was up again. I, I guess, yeah, I just think about how city council will use this. I'm guessing that the themes are what might get the most attention. So I would just suggest I support housing affordability and diversity and equity and social justice as a key theme. I would just suggest that we elevate climate, um, planning as a key theme too. And then everything else we can fill in.
Yeah. Yeah, the more I, I, that, you know, the, you know, the events of the past year make me realize like part of what we need to do with all, with everything we do, all of our processes and policies is run them through a few filters. And I agree, I think housing affordability and diversity, I think is a big, sort of a, in many ways, a subcomponent of equity and social justice. But like, those are two big things. But I do think more and more, we have to think about the climate, uh, issue at the beginning of everything that we think about. Cause, cause these are like, all these things are long-term, evolutions that only happen potentially over a really, over a really long time, uh, and only if we stay on top of it and factor it into pretty much everything we do. So you can't just sit down and say, hey, what's our climate policy for the next 10 years? Solve that problem. This is not going to happen that way. And same thing with obviously with equity and social justice stuff. So I like the idea of framing it as like, hey, you're talking about high level priorities. These are the three things that we think are, you know, everything we do, we have to run it through these filters and see what, what, how we need to tweak it. And then, you know, below that, there's all these other things. Practical things that are priorities. And that, and I think last year we had like five or six practical areas that were priorities, which I think was important. And that's, you know, at the end of the day, we have to do stuff. So I like that approach if people agree with that. Mr. Stevens.
I, I fully agree with that. I think that makes, uh, good sense and gives you, uh, uh, I think, uh, an interesting set of things to talk about with the, the city council and, and hopefully to, uh, solicit their, uh, their feedback, which is always important as well.
Yeah, if I recall last year when I presented it, I didn't have a lot of questions after I gave it, but, um, but I, you know, I think it, I do think it's important. Well, I think it helps that they know that these are the things we're going to be looking at. So anything that they refer out to us, they should know, we're going to say, okay, well, how do, how does it, how does it go through these three, uh, important areas? And, um, if no one's thought about those things, we may say, hey, can you think about those things? Don't just send us stuff without having thought about them. Uh, I, I, I'm optimistic. I think they have a similar view, uh, from what I've been able to tell. So I, I think we'll be working together with them and not sort of against them. But I do think that if we express our interest in prioritizing these things, it will help them keep it a priority for them as well.
I totally support that.
Um, so Ms. Bazemore, so do you think, uh, you know, I don't know how much we need to like, try to hammer out the specific language here, although the goal is to approve something. So how would you frame it up based on what we've said so far?
Yeah. So I do think that, um, on that last page, I'll list the housing and then social justice and equity and climate planning as the three high level priorities. And then maybe add a sentence then about, um, looking at items that come before the commission through a lens that focuses on those three key interests. Um, and then below have some specific projects or areas of interest that you guys are interested in. Aside from the three high level priorities, areas of interest.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. And I guess my question is, do, do people here tonight want to spend time quickly, hopefully talking about what those line items are at the, at the end of the high level things or I mean, I also would include a little bit of a disclaimer saying, you know, hey, we, these are a little bit subject to, well, I think the high level things we're all pretty committed to, but the, the details are a little bit subject to, uh, change as we get into our year and work on things.
I can put that disclaimer in.
Mostly thinking, I think we'll dig in on those. Like, I'd like to come out of the advance, which I think is going to be in March. Is that what we talked about last time?
Yes, your first meeting in March.
Alright, so a month basically, then we're going to have to do the advance. And I'd like to come out of the advance with a lot. You know, I think we'll talk about those three high level things, but I think a good thing to come out of the advance is going to be like the handful of concrete things that we're really going to try to accomplish, which sometimes we can do those on our own. Sometimes they're dependent on council and then therefore we have a mixed, mixed record on achieving those. But, um, but I don't, we're not going to hash those out tonight. So the, you know, the things listed in the memo that you pulled together, I mean, I, you know, if we got down to it, I might say, well, is public art a super big priority compared to, I don't know, preserving existing affordable dwellings? Probably not, but like, sure, all those things seem important to me.
Right. And I can include, um, a sentence or two about you guys refining the priorities during your annual advance in March. Um, that can be included on the last page of the report. So it's signaled to council that you're going to delve into these further at a later time.
Yeah, that sounds great. Tim, do you have other things to say?
You done? Sorry, I missed that.
I just, uh, your little fake hand is still up. I don't know if you wanted to chime in again or not, or if that was just lingering. Anyone else have thoughts on this? Not seeing any other thoughts on this. I assume everyone is cool with the, the adjustments made to the actual report based on our last meeting where we talked about it. Since nobody has commented on that. Alright. If, if we have confidence in Ms. Bazemore's ability to capture our priorities, someone could make a motion to adopt uh, the annual report to council and then we can vote on.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the proposed annual report as indicated in the staff memo.
I'll second.
Alright. A motion from Mr. Stevens, second from Ms. Teetz. I'm assuming we have no public comment on this.
No public comment.
Weird. Any, uh, planning commissioners' comments before we do a quick vote? Not seeing any. If you could just call a quick vote on this, Ms. Bazemore, that'd be great.
Yeah, Chair Rankin.
Yeah.
Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Ms. Teetz.
Yes.
Mr. Pontez.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
Ms. Coman.
Yeah. Thank you.
Andy, you're muted.
If I do this long enough, I'll learn how to unmute. Although I, I will say if we use something other than Microsoft Teams, I'd be better at it. Uh, alright, moving on. We got that out of the way. We're on to the update to the rules of procedure. Uh, we talked about this last time. I'm sure Ms. Bazemore will give us a quick update, but we had a couple of tweaks, nothing too serious, I don't think. Uh, Ms. Bazemore, do you have a quick recap?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, tonight, uh, the request is for you all to review and adopt the proposed amendments to the group's rules of procedure. Um, you reviewed this last on your, or during your January 6th meeting. Um, and the following adjustments have been made to the current rules of procedure. Um, line 355, um, regarding the meeting night. Um, once we switch back to in-person meetings someday, um, you all indicated that you would like to continue meeting on Wednesday nights. Um, and then the next change was on line 413, um, regarding electronic participation. Um, uh, the planning commission agreed on incorporating the enabling language for all remote meetings. Um, this language has been added to, um, lines 472 through, uh, 474. And then finally on line, um, 699, the comprehensive plan. Um, a table has been added, um, summarizing the adoption dates of the comprehensive plan chapters for demographics, housing and environmental sustainability.
Alrighty. Sounds great. Anybody have any thoughts about these changes to our uh, procedure rules? Mr. Pontez.
I don't have any, any questions on the change. I think they, they make sense. I do have a question though. Uh, regarding, it's, um, pay, on line 384, the avoidance of meeting when members are not assembled. Um, basically this is saying that we need to keep correspondence between just one other commissioner to avoid, to avoid a public meeting. Um, if there are, if there are three commissioners that are on other, let's say email chains about other topics in the city, is that something that we need to avoid? I mean, it's not plain commission business necessarily, but there's all kinds of, you know, email.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not an attorney, uh, but my understanding is if, if, you know, if three planning commissioners show up at the same birthday party, that, that's, there's not. that, that's, there's nothing wrong with that. If they talk city business, that could be problematic. So I would.
Not, but it's, um, it's related issues, right, that aren't, that are issues that the planning commission might be taking up, but they're, you know, it's not, it's not social, right? It's, um, civic issues, I would say.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, if you're like in a neighborhood, if you have to live in the neighborhood with two other commissioners, you guys are talking about some, you know, policy stuff, I guess technically you should probably recuse yourself. But I don't know, I don't know if anyone on staff has any comments. I mean, I think the, the public meeting rules are pretty clear, but also pretty confusing when you start talking about certain public issues. I think is, yeah, Brett probably knows.
Jeremy, I mean, I, I would just, my few cents on it is that I think the, the distinction is three, you know, well, as we all know, it takes four planning commissioners to do something as far as, you know, approve something, but three constitute a meeting. Although there's not a lot that can, you know, as far as actual action that can take place. So I think that's where the number three is coming from. When you have three commissioners together somewhere, if they, right, if they're discussing anything that's related to the planning commission, that would be a problem. And even if that was email and they were exchanging stuff now. I think if, you know, on a case by case basis, you know, Mr. Pontes, you might just want to ask the city attorney, you know, it would be confidential. Ask the city attorney, um, and get her input. If it's something that's going to be an ongoing matter and you anticipate, you know, at least three of us might be involved and even if the issue is kind of tangentially related to something we might be concerned with either in the present or in the future. The smart thing would be to just get her input. And attorneys do tend to be conservative in the respect, in the sense of trying to err on the side of caution, but I think as long as there's not like a real time interaction amongst the three members. And again, I'm not an attorney, but just as a, somebody who works with a lot of public bodies in Virginia. As long as there's not, um, you know, a, a real time kind of exchange of ideas amongst those three people about a planning commission related topic, it might be okay. But I would say if it sounds like you have something specific in mind, you might want to run it by her just to be on the safe side. Cause that, that's where the number three comes from.
It's pretty helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions about rules of procedure? No? All right. So then we just need a motion to adopt these, uh, changes. Is that right? It's a really short motion.
Yes, that's correct.
There's a quick, quick, okay, but Mr. Chairman, just now that I'm just, you know, waking up here. Just the, the change of our date, uh, or our day, our, our meeting date, I mean, we, I know we had talked about kind of, you know, when it came up last time, we kind of, I think in general, people said, well, okay. I mean, again, for me, it's just my own personal schedule. There are times when Wednesdays are not ideal for me, but, um, I mean, are we, are we saying we're permanently switching to Wednesdays kind of forevermore? You know, is that kind of, and, and I'm, I'm willing, I'm okay with that. Especially if it makes it easier for staff. And I remember I asked Mr. Stoddard about that and kind of said yes and no. I wasn't quite sure, but I know in the past there were issues with us meeting at the same time as council. And I just want to make sure that, is that kind of what we're encapsulating here? You know, enshrining in our bylaws that we're, you know, we're now officially Wednesday nights forevermore.
Yeah, I think first of all, that was, I agree with your interpretation. It wasn't a slam dunk to me that staff would love a Wednesday versus Monday, but it seemed like everyone was kind of like, uh, I guess was this good? But I think like the Senate, we can just change our rules whenever we want. So while I do think this is putting it into our rules of procedure that we will meet on Wednesdays, I think should circumstances change, even if it's like three months from now, we decide, uh, we want to go back to Mondays. I presume we can just update this again.
I guess that's probably true. I know, I know. I guess it depends, you know, I guess, right. I mean, I, I know. You know, there are however many moving parts are related to, you know, having us on a certain night, everything from the folks that put out, you know, the television broadcast and everything else. Um, so, so that's fine. And we've been doing it on Wednesdays for some time now and, and it looks like it will continue.
Yeah.
I just, you know, I, I, I'd love to, you know, especially once we get back to in person, it'd just be good to see how it goes. And I mean, if everyone feels great about it, staff and us, then so be it. Um, but I just remember the discussion was kind of, you know, it was mixed reaction.
Well, and it's like for me personally, uh, well, first of all, I think we're on, the reason why we're on Wednesdays to begin with was when the pandemic first started, it was going to be technically and logistically difficult for staff to run our meeting virtually at the same time as city councils. That's how we ended up on Wednesday. I sort of assumed that that technical limitation has eased, but I don't know, maybe not. So maybe that's still a limitation. As long as we're virtual, maybe that, that is still an issue and therefore we should stick to it. But for me, I have kind of, you know, I probably have more conflicts on Mondays and Wednesdays, but you know, who knows?
Yeah. That's fine. You know, like I said, I'm not, I'm not going to like, you know,
Yeah.
to this point, it's, it's really kind of theoretical, but, um,
I am under the impression that once we go back to in person, we will at least revisit the day and just see if that still is good for everybody. But that's what I was thinking. But I think for the purposes of tonight, we put it in here. But yeah, me personally, I think if the world changes a little bit, we may be revisiting the night that we meet.
That's fine. No, that, that sounds fine.
All right. If there's no more questions, we can get a motion or people can ask questions. That's fine.
Chair, I propose that we, uh, I move that we adopt the rules of procedure, uh, as updated by staff.
All right. Motion for Mr. Stevens, second for Ms. Weiss. Again, I'm assuming no public, public comment. If that's the case, we'll just take a roll call vote.
All right, Chair Rankin. Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Ms. Teets.
Yes.
Mr. Pontes.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens. Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
Ms. Coman.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. I remembered to unmute this time. Plying ahead to the approval of the December 6th minutes, although shouldn't that be the January 6th minutes? I move we change it to the January 6th. That's just in the, in the agenda. It doesn't matter.
Thank you for catching that. I can stop there.
That's okay. The actual minutes list, January 6th, so we don't actually have to change the minutes. But are there any comments or suggested adjustments to the minutes as drafted? Mr. Pontes is unmuted.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes in planning mission meeting of January 6th, 2021.
Great. Now I see a second.
Second.
Ms. Teets got in there.
All right.
Second from Ms. Teets. All right. Unless there's any public comment or other comments, we'll just take the quick vote on this.
All right. Chair Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Ms. Teets.
Yes.
Mr. Pontes.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
Ms. Coman.
Yes. Thank you.
All righty, moving right along. That wraps up number six on the agenda of action items. Bringing us to number seven, information items. Um, some of these were deferred from our January 6th meeting and then we, you know, pushed last week's meeting back to this week. So, um, but I don't know if anything under the correspondence section requires any discussion. Ms. Aubrey, are you going to run through the director's report?
Uh, sure. I'll just give you for that one.
Sorry, sorry. I forgot to ask if there were any planning commission report. I don't have anything to report. Been a slow month. Mr. Pontes, do you have anything to report?
Been a couple of, couple of meetings, uh, on the liaison to the, uh, human services advisory council. They're reviewing, um, the city's community services fund, which is a grant program the city administers. Uh, and those are going to be, those are going to come up for approval or for recommendation to the council at their next meeting in February. When they're going to be focused on issues we talked about here today around affordability, housing affordability, social equity and justice. There's a lot of consistency, uh, between what they're focused on and it will be prioritized here as a, as a commission. The library trustees also met and we got an update, um, from the project manager on the construction. I know Russ is, is focused on, is a, uh, is, um, does the liaison to the construction group. It looks like they're making great progress on that. Um, they also had a discussion about affordable housing. And, um, they recommend strongly in favor of reconsidering voluntary concessions in order to, um, uh, the voluntary concessions for the, uh, Broad and Washington project in support of more affordable housing, uh, for that particular development. That's it.
All right. Thanks for that. Any other updates? Ms. Weiss.
The Environmental Sustainability Council met last Thursday. They are working on a proposal for the Fowler Park across from TJ. So that'll be submitted, I think, to Wrexham Park at some point in time, um, to participate in the process. And I also flagged for them, um, the update of the special exceptions criteria. Since there are some, um, environmental, uh, elements, obviously the secondary criteria, so they will be working on that and possibly providing us comments and city council comments as well.
All right. Thanks for that update. Anyone else? No? All right. Sorry, Ms. Aubrey. I think we're ready for you now. I jumped the gun before.
No problem. There's several things in the director's report, so I'll just touch on them briefly. May be able to answer questions. Otherwise I can keep track of them for Paul for next week.
Yeah, Paul's happy to answer stuff next week if.
Yeah. So there's the, the ULI Trends Awards winner, and there's a couple of examples of affordable housing projects that you might want to take a look at that. They have a, um, short videos for each one. So the other attachment is from NACTO, the National Association of City Transportation Officials. It's a guide for setting safe speed limits on urban streets, so 20 miles per hour or lower in some cases. And it's got a toolkit for updating street designs. The CACT provided a report on crash data for the city. It's for the non-reportable crashes, so where there's no injuries and minor damage. Um, and so, um, the goal is to use that list, um, to identify where they occur most frequently, determine the cause and then provide possible mitigation measures to public works and the police department. There's a, the Amazon Reach Housing Application, the grant application that the city has submitted to provide or to hopefully get support for two affordable housing efforts. One is to affordable home ownership opportunities with a revolving fund, which would, um, purchase market rate housing units and sell them at a reduced cost and then recoup the capital when you sell them. The second would be to maintain affordable home rental opportunities by extending that price control period for longer time, longer time periods. The, there is some climate risk information. Uh, one is by staff Kate Walker. Kind of a regional climate risk assessment and planning resources summary. So she took a compilation of resources, uh, from the region, regional groups on, um, climate risk uh, opportunities or assessment methods. And the other one is from the Northern Virginia Regional Commission regarding, it's a, uh, trying to think of the name, like a base, not a baseline. Anyway, there's some information on the risk assessments for the, for the area.
Dashboard, is that what they call it?
Dashboard, yes. Thank you. And so that's it. As far as the director's report.
All right. Uh, Mr. Stevens, do you have a question?
Uh, just a, a quick comment, uh, picking up on the memo that Kate Walker submitted. I was just going to point out that, uh, Virginia has joined what's called the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative or RUGI, uh, for short. And it's basically a, a cap program for, uh, controlling greenhouse gas emissions throughout the state. But it's going to require the utilities to purchase, uh, credits in order to meet the, the targets. And that money is going to go into a fund, which is going to be available to jurisdictions throughout the state to apply for grant funding for things like stormwater, uh, reducing greenhouse gas emissions with renewable energy and so forth. However, the meetings I've attended so far indicate pretty clearly that you've got to have plans, uh, you know, on the shelves, ready to go to qualify for, for this funding. So the planning efforts, I think, in particularly in the climate area are going to be, uh, become even that much more important over the coming year due to the availability of funds.
All right. That's a good thing to note when we set our priorities. Thanks for that update. Any other questions that we think Ms. Aubrey might be able to help us with? No? All right, Carly, thank you for that. Uh, I think that takes us to the end of our regular meeting and we have two work session items. First of which is special exception move tech amendment, which I gather we're going to get Ms. Bell leading us on. Uh, which I'll let you take away in just a second. I, you know, talking to Paul this afternoon. It'll be interesting to discuss this, but you know, he pointed out that, um, I think the original intention of this adjustment had to do with a fairly narrow aspect of the special exception criteria, but I think people have been, um, it's been inspiring people to think about, uh, additional ways that the special exception might be tweaked. So one of the things we'll have to figure out is, um, how we want to handle that if we're trying to just focus in on the proposed, uh, adjustments as a standalone thing, or if we're going to feel compelled to, uh, expand that. But I'll let Ms. Bell explain where we are.
Thank you. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm Susan Vellon, a planning consultant with the planning staff. And, uh, the amendment that we're talking about tonight arises from a desire to create a new tool within the SE, uh, process that would modernize the criteria and create a path that smaller projects could avail themselves of to get, uh, actually into the public review process. And by that, I mean projects that are less than three or four acres in size. The discussions have been driven somewhat by market conditions and changing economic conditions. So far, this amendment has gone through two work sessions with council in November and December. We had our first reading in December, I believe it was the 14th. And the council at that time referred these amendments to yourselves and to the EDA. And the language has changed somewhat, but essentially what we're really trying to achieve through these changes is increased flexibility for development projects. And that would be through allowing new, but not necessarily additional commercial development. As you know, right now, the criteria is net new commercial, and that has created some complications for smaller projects. And in fact, um, has created some problems for projects where there's considerable commercial on the site, whether it's occupied or not. Two projects, for example, that didn't make it through the hurdle because of the net new requirement were Tradition Place and Park and Lee. And there's a table that references some of these projects in the report. The second, um, thing, and I think this is probably near and dear to the commission's work, is to add considerations related to small area plan guidance, walkability and streetscape. And the importance of that really is to ensure that these SE projects are aligned with the planning work that is done and the policy that is developed for these sites. So if you're looking at the actual code language, um, it begins on line 200 of the report. And, um, coming out of the last city council work session, um, there were some changes. Actually, it's a little bit lower than that, Emily. Yeah, that's right. Perfect. The, um, city council was, um, convinced that it was extremely important that all three criteria be complied with. Um, and so that language has been added since the first reading. Initially, the language said that the primary criteria were essential, but did not require compliance with all of the criteria. And one council member was particularly interested in that and other members joined in. Um, the second change is in subcategory B. And the second change is in subcategory B or like B, which is line 220, 224. And that is where we deleted net new and added in or renovated space. So it's still a focus on commercial development, still a focus on a mix of commercial and residential, but that net new element is gone. So it's new or renovated. The word significant, which is in the current language, remains unchanged. And then the third section that has a change in it of significance is C, beginning on 228. And previously it said, "Commercial and residential revenue." And again, in the council's first reading discussion, the words "and residential" were deleted. So right now, the focus would be newer renovated square footage or space and net new commercial revenue to the city. And then finally, and this is more editorial, what had been criteria D has been moved to be a second, its own paragraph, because it is actually an exception to the above items. And then as you move into the secondary criteria, there are a number of changes that are made, all really relating to small area planning, compatibility with development, walkability, and more descriptive language with respect to transportation and other community resources and benefits. This is at the Economic Development Authority meeting. There was some discussion about whether or not this would facilitate an entirely condo project and really whether commercial revenue was an adequate measure for a new project. With respect to the small condo, I think the most upfront answer is that this really doesn't address the desire for an all residential project. And I think as Paul has probably talked with you about, that would be a secondary work item that we would approach after this one is completed. And then with respect to commercial revenue, there seemed to be a desire to really focus on commercial revenue in the interest of a balanced tax base, even recognizing that retail development is not really something that's easily financed at the present time or necessarily easy to fill, even if it is financeable. And with that, I'll stop talking and take your questions.
All right. Well, thank you for letting us through that and help. I am prepared for anyone. I have a couple.
Yeah.
Also, really, Ms. Bell, not muted.
There you go, Tim.
I attended that meeting on the, the EDA meeting on the seventh. That was a very interesting and vigorous discussion. I think it highlighted for me, and that's something that has kind of been developing over the last few years, certainly postdates when these regulations were first written. And that is the blurring of distinction between commercial and residential. Now, in the past, we've kind of treated these as silos and, you know, we wanted a lot more commercial because that was important from, from a tax burden perspective. But as, as the distinction between commercial and residential starts to blur, then you do run into problems like the EDA raised, which is, well, what happens if you had a very compelling all condo building, let's say on Park Avenue, where it really doesn't make sense to have ground floor retail. Our regulations and even the proposals here would not allow for that. And I realize, Ms. Bell, that you said that this is a sequencing effort and that that could be addressed later. But I just thought that, that that comment and that, that blurring of distinction between residential and commercial was, was a comment that I would like to see us make to, to city council. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that for right now. Probably have some other comments later, but I'll just stop at this point with that.
Tim, could you give an example of a blurred use that's not quite residential, not quite commercial?
Yeah, well, for one thing, it seems to me the bottom line, what, what's really important here is having a project that is financially viable. And we've seen recently, even with like the Broad and Washington, where the big expansion of residential and reduction of the, the commercial space, but nonetheless, the financials were better. So, you know, depending on how that residential space is designed, you could still wind up with an end result that is very favorable for the city. And so if we were to have a very artificial distinction that just emphasized, well, we want this much commercial and then, you know, limit the residential, that we, we may be missing some, some, some opportunities. Other specific to your question would be the work at home. We've seen in the Broad and Washington where they added units where, you know, that they would facilitate work at home. So we're seeing people do, especially with the pandemic, and I believe it'll carry beyond this, is that people are starting to move around where they work. And what used to be a very clear distinction between go to the office of work and, and you come home and there you do residential things, that, that those, those things are starting to blur. So it may not, may not be as critical as it has in the past to say, well, we specifically want this much commercial development in order to be approved.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think that I, I'm a little less concerned about the blurring of what is commercial and what is residential, because other than those live working, it's, I think it's still pretty clear. But I, it is interesting because I agree that Broad and Washington, for example, with less commercial space than what's there now technically is, is better financially for the city. But, but it sounds like city council is specifically striking factoring in residential revenue in this special exemption. Is that right, Ms. Bell? I mean, that seems to go against what Tim was just saying.
The focus on the commercial revenue was an attempt, I think, to sort of balance the tax base and to say that there, there still is a desire for mixed use, particularly on the main commercial streets. I mean, not to give that up in its entirety, even if it means having to wait a little bit to get that space filled.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I think also compared, when you compare it with the, the net new being gone and it's just new or renovated, you could look at a Broad and Washington and more holistically as opposed to just focusing on the square footage.
Yeah, sure, that, that makes sense. I agree with that. I just, it's, it's, you know, I've been around, not as long as some folks, but I've been around long enough to know a little bit of the backstory, you know, the resistance to any kind of residential development in commercial areas. In the early days, you know, a lot of people explained it different ways, but I think, and this is maybe just my opinion, but it seemed, it seemed a bit tied into a strategy to just prevent this, the city from developing. I mean, I think some folks had lived here for a long time when it was a much smaller, quieter place. Were looking for ways to, to keep it that way. And so they tried to tie in this sort of connection of commercial development when you're redeveloping to prevent everything from, from redeveloping at all. But that evolved into a very, I think, real challenge, which is if you wipe out all of our commercial tax base and you replace it with residential tax base, depending on the nature of those residents, it could create a tax burden that we then have even harder time paying for. I think what we've seen with the mixed use developments over the past 15 years or so is been that the residential tax burden is, has been so far greatly outweighed by the residential tax income, which isn't true for like a single family home or something like that, but is, seems to be very true for the types of multifamily mixed use buildings that we've done. So that's a little bit of history from my perspective and I see Mr. Stevens has his hand up.
Yeah, just a quick follow up. I think for any project that's on the main commercial streets in the city, we clearly want and a significant commercial element there just to enhance walkability, which may be actually the overarching goal that we want to try to achieve, rather than just specifically say this much commercial in and of itself. I think where the EDA was going and where it kind of struck me as, as being something that we might want to support is those areas that are off the, the main commercial arena where it may not make sense to require that there be commercial space in any, any mixed use development or larger project that requires a special exception.
But without any commercial space, it wouldn't be a mixed use development, right? It would just be residential development.
And there may be instances where, you know, that would make, you know, good sense.
Yeah, I, I agree that the commercial component is multifaceted and certainly walkability and, and just the sort of nature of the area. But I think there's a strong financial component to it as well. So that's where, I, I, I don't, I mean, like Ms. Bell said at the beginning, I don't personally think we should be trying to adjust the proposed language here to try to create a scenario where the special exception process could be used to create an entirely residential building in a commercial area. I, I just think that's a different ball of wax, although I, it may make sense for us to talk about ways to do that via some vehicle. I, I'm not disagreeing with that. But I think for the purposes of this discussion, I think what we're trying to figure out is, are we, do we support or what is our opinion of or comments on this attempt to tweak the existing special exception process to allow for redevelopment mixed use projects that, that don't have net new commercial square footage as well as some of these other things. Thoughts on that? Mr. Krasner?
I guess my, I mean, my question, and again, I, I didn't listen to the, you know, the council session on this, but you know, has there been any talk about, I mean, the words significant in B and then substantial and C are really, you know, sort of vague. And I know, you know, obviously, you know, depending on who you're asking, I mean, what's significant and what's substantial? I mean, different people might be reading those terms, you know? Perhaps we want to build in some flexibility for people, you know, council and for ourselves, perhaps be able to make some judgment on that. I'm not saying there needs to be like, you know, specific percentages and figures, but I just think those terms are somewhat vague. And I, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure. And I, and those aren't supposed to change and those have been in there, I guess, since, since 2003. But, you know, how would one define that? You know, substantial, positive net new commercial or significant new or significantly renovated commercial space? How would we define that, I guess? So that's like the main comment, I guess, when I looked there overall, I understand like what's, what they're, what we, what, you know, what, what the point of the amendment is trying to do. And I think generally it's, it's a, it's a good thing. But we, you know, we should take the opportunity perhaps to maybe think about those particular words. And I don't know if there is a better way to describe it or there's better text that could be used to make it very clear, know what one would need to do to meet the test. You know, I guess to the, to the extent with any ordinance, right, to the extent it can be as transparent and as clear as possible, what for a developer, for example, what the expectation is. You know, the, the better, the end result, you know, typically that we will see or, or the product rather that will, that comes through the door. But that said, you know, same thing for staff and for council itself and for us to try to evaluate it. So anyhow, it's more of like editorial type of comment on the, on the wording, but I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that issue. You know, maybe everyone else knows exactly what those terms mean in this context, but, but that strikes me as, as something that maybe could be improved.
Yeah, that makes sense. Ms. Weiss, you a comment or question or thought?
Yes, and I'm unmuted. Yes, just I guess a couple of comments on the objective of this proposed amendment is that it does make sense to me to allow for more infill and smaller development. So that, that principle makes a lot of sense to me. In terms of the, the special exceptions process, this is for mixed use. Just looking at the primary criteria alone, you know, paragraph B under the primary criteria requires significant new or renovated commercial space. So that locks us in because of SIS mixed use to having some kind of commercial. But to the point of, you know, and looking at paragraph C, you know, just thinking about Mr. Stevens' comments on sort of the blurring between commercial and residential, more work from home spaces over time. And just referring back to our meeting back in December, where we looked at housing capacity analysis and found that we do need to create more housing capacity throughout the city. I wonder if we need to tie ourselves to new commercial revenue in paragraph C. It seems to me since B will get us, I mean, B requires commercial space that be new or renovated. I wonder, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure why we need to specify in C that we must have new commercial revenue, why we can't just have substantial positive net new revenue and leave it flexible.
Ms. Bell, do you want to comment on?
Sure, I just wanted to be sure nobody else was going to jump in. I think it's not to the exclusion of residential revenue, but more to suggest the importance of a commercial component to the project being of a revenue benefit to the city. Because in, in order to get the project, it's got to be mixed use as noted above. But again, there, there is a desire to make sure that there will be a commercial component that at some point will provide positive net new commercial revenue. There seems to be some concern about loss of, you know, space to all residential, given that market demand for residential continues to be extraordinarily high and you can still finance it. And so I think the, the concern was that it does not be lost in this process.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I think that one of the things I always try to keep in mind when we think about these things is like, like right now, oh, the blurring between commercial and residential and we think because we've been in a pandemic for 11 months and everyone's had to work from home, that suddenly there's going to be this big new wave of everyone working from home over the long term. I just think like, who knows what it's going to be like in 10 or 15 or 20 years? And some of these buildings that go up are there for 50 years or more. So I think we need to be thoughtful about that. So I think a concern people have, and I, I, I sort of agree with you, Ms. Weiss, in the sense that if you are meeting item B in the primary criteria, it, it, it'll probably be hard for you to not also meet C, just because the, most of the commercial space that's being redeveloped is not performing particularly well. It doesn't take a lot to have substantial net new commercial revenue. But I think the fear is if we, if we let a bunch of this commercial space go to, to either particularly low performing commercial uses or just 100% residential, that years down the road, we're, we're, you know, when those residential you know, parameters change and have different net financials, that if we don't have the commercial base to support it, we could, we could be in trouble. That's just my, my take, but, but I think Ms. Kumon had a comment or question.
Hi, Dad, thanks, Jerenkin, it's Kumon, just, just so you know.
I'll get it, hold on, I'll get it.
I know you will.
And it's Andrea, right?
Andrea, yeah, that's.
That's easy because my sister-in-law is named Andrea, so I'll remember.
Not Andrea, good, good, the right pronunciation. I was just going to echo Mr. Krasner's comment about the words significant and substantial. I had that same question myself, wondering what that might mean. I imagine though that maybe city council might prefer to be able to define what that might mean. So it's probably why those words are, are there. And then I was going to make the same comment that Ms. Weiss did about a need for housing in the city and the fact that commercial is specified in primary criteria B. I think the original proposed language that went to council that was then changed for criteria C specified just net new revenue without any sort of qualification for commercial or residential. I, I think that, that would make sense to me. I, I understand all of the hesitancy about, you know, losing commercial space to residential space. And I guess I have a, maybe like a question, but is there any way that you could, I mean, it seems to me that like a huge development like, you know, West, what's happening at West End or Broad in Washington or Founders Row is very different from like a, you know, one acre development. And is there, I mean, I don't, I don't imagine that the city wants to have separate criteria for these two very different kinds of projects, but it's just a shame that these little ones are subject to the same criteria that the big huge ones are. So I don't know, maybe that's a question for Ms. Bell.
I think the actual issue for the smaller ones was that they couldn't meet the test of significant net new rep, the commercial space as opposed to the revenue threshold. Because the, the two projects that I mentioned earlier, Park and Lee and Tradition Place each were forecasting, and this was from the developers, granted, not from fiscal impact analysis, revenues of four to five hundred thousand dollars when stabilized. So that, that's not nothing for small projects. So I think that's really more the issue than anything that they wouldn't, that they can make the, they can make the revenue, but the, the amount of floor play that they actually have for commercial use, it's pretty hard when you're dropping a building and then put it, that's entirely commercial or a converted house that's entirely in commercial use. It's pretty hard to accommodate that same square footage in a single floor of a new small building. So it just doesn't, the mathematics of the, and the geometry just don't work out. And so that's what really tripped those smaller sites up was the net new factor.
That makes sense.
Yeah. In, in my conversations with some city council people, I, I do think that some of them feel like there should be a different tool. If you want to build a condo building on, on Park and Lee, it maybe should be done under a different process than the special exception. I don't know that that's a universally held opinion, but I know some people say, yeah, this isn't the tool to do something like that if that's what you want to do. But I don't know that we have the tool to do that. So that's something that they need to work on. And there's an EDC meeting tomorrow where I think it will be discussed if anyone wants to join at noon, I think. Like you don't have anything else to do tomorrow. All right. Mr. Stevens, you've had your fake hand up for a while.
Yeah, I'll put it down. Just to, to follow on, on your comment there, I, I think as we contemplate what we want to say to city council, I think it would be helpful if we did at least indicate our thinking with respect to these smaller projects and the need for modification or adjustment in some way to allow for some of these smaller projects to occur, that there is a need for that.
Yeah, I'd be up for debate that. I mean, I personally, I, I don't, the question of whether or not there should be a, I know this is what, isn't what people are saying, but whether or not there should be a condo only building on Park and Lee, I don't know the answer to that. Do I think that would be good for the city? I, I don't know. I mean, honestly, a lot of it would have to do with the financials of it, and I don't know that that's been analyzed. To me, that, you know, you'd be giving up some commercial land to become strictly residential. I think it's possible that that could be a net positive on the city. It's possible. It might not be. It would be good to have more housing options, but we have to, I think this big push for more housing options has to, you always have to follow through on, okay, what is going to be the other impact on costs elsewhere? Because we could inadvertently suddenly make it too expensive in other ways because we now have these different housing options. So I, I, I'm not, I agree a hundred percent. We should say, hey, we should figure this out. But I think I, I don't necessarily presume that we definitely want a condo building on a small piece of commercial land. I think we probably should better evaluate whether or not we want that. And if we decide we do want that, we should have a mechanism for that to happen. I would totally favor analyzing that more. Other, I have a few other thoughts, but I want to give everybody a chance to weigh in. Ms. Weiss?
Yeah, everybody's very quiet this evening, but I, I do have some other thoughts. Beyond the primary criteria, looking particularly at the secondary criteria, you know, when I was attending the ESC meeting ahead of time, I forwarded them this to them and said, hey, you know, it would be great to get your input on the lead criteria or other elements of the secondary criteria that could be updated based on the work we've just done in chapter five. That belatedly occurred to me that they are not the only board and commission who might want to take a look at this. So I actually, one, I, I don't think this did go from city council to other boards and commissions, but given that secondary criteria are also being reviewed, I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful to send this to other boards and commissions for their input.
I think it might. We, we could suggest that.
We were referred out just to EDA and to yourselves. So if that would be your recommendation, that, that would be helpful to hear.
I would recommend that.
Yeah, I don't, I, that, I think that couldn't hurt. I have no idea what the timing on all this is and if somebody has some goal in mind, obviously that would add time to it. But I think it would be a good idea. Any other thoughts? Tim, you're not muted. I don't know if that's on purpose.
I did have a thought just to pick up on that. You know, these secondary criteria haven't been looked at presumably for years, and so they no doubt are in need of a fresh look. I guess it remains to be seen whether council wants to do that now or just take a more narrow focus on the issue at hand here with the thought that updating these criteria is something that needs to be done, but at a future date.
You mean updating it beyond the limited updates that are, that are in there now?
That's right.
Yeah. I assume that their intention is to go with these updates as they've had this in two work sessions already. All right, Mike, if anyone wants to weigh in, feel free, but my, my quick comment. First of all, was it's nice to see the sec, the secondary criteria be updated a little bit anyway. You know, I think that, that to me, the dream scenario is we create these small area plans that kind of spell out the kinds of things that if developers would show up with, they would likely get through the special exception process efficiently because it all lines up. So the more the special exception criteria reflects what we've developed over the years in the small area plans, the more of all that makes sense to me. But I am, I, I'm still confused by primary criteria one C and striking of in residential. I, I, I generally agree that if you're sticking with B, the comment about substantial positive net new commercial revenue is maybe unnecessary. I mean, I, I, I think commercial revenue is important, but I'm mostly focused on making sure that the, that the commercial zoned area remains available for future. You know, so like, if somebody wants to redevelop something and the plan doesn't have particularly great commercial revenue, but it's still commercial and could be used for some other commercial use down the road, I'm more comfortable with that than it just becoming residential because it's really hard to go back. But I am wondering when they strike in residential revenue, does that mean that if a developer comes and says, hey, look, I've got this project? It's, it meets criteria A, you know, I'm renovating all this commercial space, so it's basically the same square footage, it'd just be brand new, so it meets B. And I don't know, it has some new commercial revenue, substantial is a, a loose word, but by the way, it has tons of great financials on the residential side. Is striking in residential suggesting that council specifically won't consider the residential revenue component? Or is it saying that a project isn't required to have residential revenue?
I think it's actually silent on both of those things in, in terms of specifics. My understanding is that the fiscal impact model doesn't break it out very completely right now. And so Becky will have to work to break out the kinds of revenues that go into the model for the commercial kinds of activities. So the various taxes and so forth. I think the council will continue to look at the pa, the whole package in its entirety, certainly in terms of the mix of uses. But again, I think the, the emphasis is really on making sure that there's going to be real commercial that's going to actually generate something positive financially for the city. Not to the exclusion of residential, but it's not going to be a primary criteria.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that, I, I'm just thinking of a, of a project that maybe someone could argue this isn't substantial positive net new commercial revenue. But like the residential revenue numbers are like outstanding and, and we're sort of like hemming and hawing over it. It's like, come on, this is a no-brainer. Why, why aren't we doing this? But by striking in residential, I mean, because the opposite is amazing. I can't, I can't imagine a big mixed use project that had, I, 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 I guess, I would worry about this maybe. If someone came in with a mixed use project and they have substantial positive net new commercial revenue, but the residential side is a giant sinkhole of costs and hardly any revenue, like that would be bad. So maybe requiring that there is residential, you know, net residential revenue would be important. I guess I'm confused. I, I, I get that they're trying to preserve. To me, it's the whole package. I want to preserve commercial zoning so that there's a future there. And I want the whole package to have a positive financial impact on the city. And I'm concerned that we're inadvertently creating a scenario where we could have a project that meets the primary criteria, but is actually not a overall positive financial impact on the city, which I can't imagine city council wants. So I might just be misunderstanding.
No, I, I don't, I don't think you are. In the discussion at the, at the first reading where this came up, one of the things that was discussed was how initially when multifamily was coming in above commercial, in the main commercial streets, there was concern that it would be a sinkhole, you know, that the revenue would never come in on the residential side. And what I think has been learned is that multifamily makes money all day long in the current market. And it's the commercial that sometimes struggles. And in fact, the, the residential sometimes needs to be bigger in order to essentially subsidize the cost of the commercial and the rents that can be charged for the space. So I think it's, it's not that they want to discount the importance of the residential revenue, but more, you know, shine a bit of a light, if you will, on the commercial being a significant component. You all can certainly disagree. The language changed a couple of different times through this, these various iterations of work sessions. But that was where they came out at the end of the first reading.
Well, and I, I certainly agree with that sentiment. My concern is whether or not the language is actually doing that, because I, I, it's almost a hundred percent true. However, if, if all of the mixed use projects we had built were Pearson Squares without the office building, the opposite would be true. We would not be doing well. The Pearson Square, the three-bedroom apartments has not been a moneymaker for the city, certainly not like Paris Dieter and, and North Gate and those other ones are. So the devil is in the details there. So that's why, to me, an analysis of the financial impact of the specific residential, multifamily residential proposal is important. Absolutely important. But I can't possibly be the only one that thinks that. Anyway, so I don't know if there's a way to tweak that language or, or just make sure that they are aware of that, like that we're, that we're aware of that scenario. I don't know.
I, I will certainly note it in the report.
Mr. Stevens is unmuted.
Yeah, I, I think your last comment there just points out, if you're too rigid on these definitions, that we risk foregoing possibly very good development projects here in the city.
Well, and I was going to say, I think that they use the words substantial and significant on purpose because that allows city council to decide in real time what's substantial and what's significant. But I don't know if that's good or bad. I, I agree with you, Brett, that that creates a gray area, but I suspect that's on purpose.
Right. Well, I mean, just, just especially with regards to significant renovation. I mean, is it significant and sort of the dollars they're investing, significant square footage? And maybe that's fine to have the flexibility. I mean, there's tons of parts of the ordinance that, you know, I mean, every criteria, secondary criteria is inherently subjective, you know, and that's, you know, mostly, and that's, and that's okay. You know, that's why it goes through a public process, you know, so ourselves and the council ultimately can, can make the call on those things, and that's fine. I just thought that if there was a, you know, and I don't know, you know, to the extent it's been a problem over the, over the years, you know, as far as debating that point. I mean, maybe there hasn't been a problem. Everyone knows it when they see it. As far as substantial and significant. And I don't know if that particular criteria has, has proved to be a source of, you know, any type of confusion or issue. Maybe it hasn't been, in which case so be it. That's fine. But that, that was my main point bringing.
I, I, I think for the space thing, the issue is the net, right? So significant net new square footage is a challenge. So like Founders Road two, or whatever they call it, the proposal across the street, it's going to be a real struggle for them to design something that works over there that has, that you clearly say has a significant net new number of square footage, because they're replacing a fair amount of square footage of completely underperforming commercial space. So like, that's a place where having the, the actual square footage have to go up by a significant number is going to be hard to pull off. I, I do wonder the way it's worded, the resulting development provides for significant new or renovated commercial space. Would that permit a reduction in square footage? I guess it doesn't really say one way or another.
Well, with the net new coming out and it's just new or renovated, I think the, the amount of square footage is less the issue than the quality of the space. And, you know, as you mentioned, the, the property at the corner there is completely non-performing at this point. And so any space that's occupied and generating traffic and trade is going to be a positive for the city in that location.
Yeah, but for example, like, I mean, could they come in and do like, oh, we have a really fancy, nice eight hundred square foot corner retail shop and the rest of it's residential? So it's new, it's tiny, it's nothing. Like, you know what I mean? Like, I, I guess that would be a judgment call that city council would make. I, 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 I like, as you guys can guess, I like the idea of protecting at least what we have in terms of area, because it gives you a future. Presumably any redevelopment is, is going to have new commercial. I can't imagine redeveloping any of these, any place in the city and like not, not changing the existing commercial. So to me, it's the new part. It's more like, I, I get that we don't necessarily need to be a lot more or even any more square footage than was there, but I would be hopeful that we are ga, trying to get at least the square footage that exists. Brett, you're still unmuted, and I saw Ms. Weiss raise her hand briefly. And now Rob's unmuted too. So who's up?
I was just gonna say, just on your last point, that it, I mean, the, your, the point on area is a, is a good one because this isn't focused on that at all, right? It is focused on the revenue component. Right? That is the, and, and your example of the, of the the proposed development catty corner from Founders Row was a really good example, where there is, you're right, the, the area is there of significant commercial space. But you're right, it's, it is underperforming.
Well, maybe you're, maybe you're clarifying something to me, which is that B and C work together, right? So using that example, like they can't put in a tiny little bit of new
Right.
commercials and call it done, because that's not going to get positive net new commercial revenue.
Right, right.
So the, maybe the positive net new commercial revenue protects you a little bit in terms of how much commercial they're going to put. They're going to have to put in enough to at least make the revenue number go in a direction.
Right, right.
And the other thing that we haven't really talked a lot about, but in the first sentence above the criteria, there is a change that requires compliance with all three of the primary criteria. It's not a
Yeah.
maybe anymore.
And it's
They are absolutely linked by code.
Yeah, and I think previously, basically up until Broad and Washington, I think in practice, we had, my interpretation is that we assumed that all three were required, but I think with Broad and Washington, it kind of, well, no, not totally required. So I understand that change. I think it makes sense to be crystal clear if they're all required or not. They want them all to be required, required, that's fine. That's why I have to scrutinize those criteria carefully because we won't be able to give a thumbs up to something that doesn't quite meet the criteria. I mean, like, I think Broad and Washington is debatable whether you could call that significant net new square footage. So I don't think most people would agree that it met So I don't think most people would agree that it met pri- primary criteria be under the current code. But I also think under the current code, you could probably wiggle out saying it was not, it was essential but not required. So that is a, those two changes are gonna go that makes sense to me. All right, we've talked about some issues. Let's get down to the nuts and bolts. What do we want to? We're we are being asked to give them some feedback, right? This is just a work session, I'm not making any motions or anything. Ms. Weiss?
Yeah, I just have a question on that. Our our work session, or sorry, our our session next week is to take action on it. And I just wanted to circle back to the other boards and commissions getting a bite at the apple in terms of the secondary criteria and how the timing works. Um, city council is taking, I guess this is a question for staff. If um, the planning commission, if one of the recommendations from the planning commission next week were to refer this out to boards and commissions, would that, how would that affect your timing? Um, or if the planning commission wants to get feedback from other boards and commissions, I that how does how does getting feedback from other boards and commissions fit in? Because that is something I think would be helpful.
To be honest with you, I don't know the schedules of those other commissions. Um, but we're scheduled to go to city council for second reading in mid February. So my guess is that we might be able to get to one or two, but probably not all. Um, so it would push it out into March. But as far as I know, that is not, you know, is not hugely problematic.
The the current expectation is for us to take action next week, a week from today.
Correct.
If this
That's right.
We will not be able to take our action if we would like, if we would like to have that feedback before we take action because there's no way to get it on any, I don't think anyone's having any
Right.
But um, but we could take action and assume that city council will hear that. Or we, I don't know, this is where I don't, if Paul were here, he brought us how much hard it would take, would cause if we said, hey, we're not gonna actually take action next week. I don't have any idea.
I don't think there's any project that's hinging on this in the next month or so.
Yeah, I think um, some of the, like with Founder's Road two coming in, but I don't believe they've actually submitted yet. This was to help accommodate that project. Although, like I said, I I'm not sure what that schedule is. Um, I think as far as motions, I think what your options would be would next week would be to either you know, recommend a approval with the recommendation that the council sends it out to other boards or recommend denial based on, yeah, that might have to look at the charter, rules of procedure or something, recommend denial based on wanting boards and commissions approval. I don't know if you could defer action because the council has requested your recommendation.
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that either.
Well, we can circle back with Paul and perhaps the city attorney. I think defer was a legitimate action um, to gain additional input from these other commissions. Um, it'd be helpful if we have a list of those commissions regardless before we finish this evening.
Yeah, I think this evening we should make that list. That makes a lot of sense. And I think what we should do is we should give enough feedback so that one week from today, we we can, I mean, we can always, if if we can't defer, we can always decline. I mean, you know, we that's what we do. We vote. So but we should provide as much information as we have, feedback as we can today so that if we find out that there's some big deal that we have to just vote it up or down next week, we are prepared to do so. Um, or if the answer is like, yeah, we'll definitely get that feedback, but we still need you guys to vote up or down. Like, like, let's be as prepared as we can and we will figure out what we'll do next week. But um, a list of who we should refer it out to would be good. And any specific comments? Mr. Stevens, you've had your hand up for a while.
Yeah, I think Charlie kind of covered what I was gonna suggest, and that is whatever that we send to the council next week, we just say, our recommendation is that you do CP input uh, from the following boards and commissions that we can identify here, we think, you know, that should include.
Sounds reasonable. Um, other than providing that list, which hopefully, I don't know, I'm guessing Ms. Weiss has some ideas, but hopefully we can compile that. Do we have any other, a specific comments? I I I think I've conveyed my concern about making sure we are aren't inadvertently allowing a negative financially performing project to meet all the criteria. But assuming that the language as written wouldn't permit that, I think I don't have any problems with the current draft. Lance, you're unmuted.
Yes, um, I I and, you know, since the planning commission is responsible for reviewing special exceptions against the primary and the secondary criteria, I, in an ideal world, would like to have those other boards and commissions feedback before we make a recommendation to city council. Um, and so if there is flexibility in the schedule, I would love to get that feedback first. Um, if that does cause huge problems, then then I think it's fine for us to do our best and each to represent the council that we're liaison to. Um, I can certainly take a swing at it for the ESC, but I would love to get their feedback. Um, I think the ESC should certainly, I've already alerted them to this, so they're working on it. I don't know if we'll get their feedback in time for our next meeting or not. I think the Urban Forestry Commission should take a look at it. I think the ACT um, is is relevant. Um, housing is relevant as well. I mean, I can't think of a, you know, park and recs because there's an open space. I I honestly can't think of a board and commission that would not want to take a look at this. Um, but maybe that's all just up there.
That's that sounds fine to me. Mr. Pontes?
I actually had a different topic, specific question or a specific comment on some of the criteria. Okay, here.
That sounds good.
It's on line 258. I'm glad to see this here about encouraging multimodal transportation. Although I think that should be much stronger, though. Um, it's it, um, I don't really think it's enforceable the way it's written now and encourages multimodal transportation. I'd much rather to see that the resulting development um, reduces the reliance on single occupancy vehicles as opposed to encourages. Um, it it just, I think that this could be written stronger so that we're not um, exacerbating transport transportation challenges in the city.
Any other specific bits of feedback people have? Man, do you think one of the challenges is is that the um, you know, there has to be some scope to what the criteria can try to encapsulate. Obviously, each project comes in, will get scrutinized in the details. Um, which isn't to say we shouldn't suggest they make, you know, item I stronger. I think that could be completely reasonable for us to suggest. And getting feedback from all the boards and commissions would be great, but you know, I I don't think that and I don't know that this is what it would result in, but I don't think the the code should end up with pages and pages and pages of detailed criteria because I think that's not the that's not how that works. I think that's that's all that stuff, all the details get applied during the actual application process, but it wouldn't hurt to get, because like, like um, Rob's comment right there, like, tight, you know, making that stronger, would that be reasonable to do in this day and age? Seems reasonable to me. There's probably other bits of feedback about the other items that the boards and commissions could weigh in on. All right, uh, it's getting a little bit later now. Any other thoughts on this that Ms. Bell can use to report back or, you know, whatever we're gonna have in front of us next week? Ms. Bazemore and or Ms. Spell, you guys got that list that Ms. Weiss ran down?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for keeping track of that. All right. Anything else? Or should we move on to our final work session item? All right. Thank you, everybody, for tackling that one. This next one, CIP review, I, when I talked to Paul this afternoon, he suggested that this was a bit of a misnomer in the sense that this is not a work session on the CIP. That happens next week. This is um, what is this? Who's gonna, who's gonna explain this to us?
I can try. I don't know if I'll be successful, but here I go. So it, what we wanted to provide tonight was um, the scorecards or report cards that we've done for the comprehensive plan and the small area plans. Um, I will note, the comprehensive plan is the same one from last year. Um, but the small area plan report cards are are new. So we've gone through each one of those plans and kind of checked off the status of the recommendations that are provided in all of them. Um, and then also bring to your attention um, three projects that the department is recommending for the CIP. And so the first one, that West End and Gordon Road Triangle item, similar to what we did in terms of getting grants for the West Falls Church parcel, um, NVTA grant, we would look to um, obtain grants for the Gordon Road Triangle area um, for similar type items as part of that redevelopment effort. And so we would include that as part of the CIP. And then the other one, um, the the four mile run, I guess it was, we'd like to get.
Yeah, I talked to Paul about that a little bit. He he his point was similar in that, you know, we have this goal of improving the four mile run, but it's really right up against um, you know, commercial land and uh, for that to ever happen, you know, it's nothing imminent, but for that to happen on CIP timeframe, we probably need to be in a position to um, partner with, you know, private sector to get that done, which will mean getting some funding.
Right. And then the last one, the Kaiser Garage, I guess was on there last time, but got taken off at the last minute. So we would like to see that put back on, same kind of concept, um, private partner. Public partnership with that to get a elevator and stuff.
Yeah, Paul, so there's some question about the how to do it legally in terms of investing public money on a private. Uh, but I think everyone agrees that the the project would be a public use. So there should be some way, you have to do it the right way, but we should figure out the right way to do it.
Right.
Uh, since that seems to be something that's been identified. So, yeah, Paul also mentioned, while this isn't our work session on CIP, it is a tight turnaround. He said we aren't likely to get the CIP materials until maybe just Tuesday, like the day before our meeting. And so um, if anyone has CIP questions or specifics that they really want to make sure are covered next week, now would be a good time to mention it. So this master can do the research, get the information needed so that even though the material, basically, if we're waiting to get the CIP materials, that's gonna happen on Tuesday. It's gonna be hard to say, hey, can you come prepared to talk about these specifics the next day? So um, anything we do specifically know right now off the top of our heads, we want to have some details on, now would be a good time to mention it, and that will allow Ms. Master to prepare that. And on the report card stuff, I think Ms. Weiss, you know, we saw these, the comprehensive plan report report card last year, and Ms. Weiss said, hey, do we do that for the small area plans? And the planning staff said, no, but that's a good idea. And so that is what has been done. So that's handy. So with all that out there, any thoughts CIP related, either on this content or a heads up that staff can relate to Ms. Master for her presentation next week?
I do like the um, the 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 way that it evaluates these investments based on based on on inequities, disparities, you know, burdens of interest. I think that that makes a lot of sense. I think it's interesting just to point out the Transportation Planning Board, the Washington Region's Metropolitan Planning Organization, recently um, uh, developed new criteria that everything that goes into our region's transportation plan is gonna have to be something that reduces greenhouse gases, right? So they made that a priority for the entire region, and it was actually led by Councilmember Snyder. Um, and I think it was approved unanimously with the exception of Virginia Department of Transportation. You can leave that for what it is, but it's a really, it's an interesting set of, it is actually pretty significant that it happens. It would be great to see you know, our local CIP use that same kind of criteria. I think Ms. Weiss mentioned this last meeting or one of our recent meetings to look at, uh, to add, you know, again, sensitive to adding too many criteria on this, but um, you know, if reducing GHG is something we care about, um, it'd be an interesting lens through which to view our public infrastructure investments.
I agree. That is a good thought. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, uh, I would certainly uh, support that. Um, particularly since our greenhouse gas emissions have only come down 2% since 2005. And uh, we were targeted to try to achieve a 20% reduction by 2020. So the, that's just not gonna happen uh, with with current plans. And I think just continually bringing that point up as we go through numerous decisions throughout the city will uh, will give us a better opportunity to to have that happen. Uh, I was also just going to see if a question could be passed along to Cindy, uh, whether or not we have budgeted any money for the conversion of our city fleet vehicles to electric vehicles.
Mr. Stevens, this is Caitlin Sobzy, the CIP Grants Manager. I can relay that to her.
Thank you.
Yep.
Didn't know we had CIP uh, brain power in the house. Great to hear that you're here listening to us.
Just here to listen, but uh, yeah, I'll be here next next meeting as well for the update.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, something where I think uh, increasingly, there's going to be grant money available for these kind of actions as long as you've got plans ready to show that you've gone through your community discussion and planning process.
Yeah, that's a good point. And um, I guess one benefit of of us being fairly small is that in theory, we can get out ahead of that a little bit quicker than other places and potentially get a better spot to get some of that grant grant money. Any other CIP related comments?
Mr. Stevens mentioned earlier that um, that need to have the designs ready to go for the Stormwater Grant Opportunities specifically. And just a note to the commission, it, you know, when you're talking about priorities and um, you know, the the next year's CIP budget, the the, having those designs ready does require some flexibility in our operating budgets to either hire consultants or just to use the staff time um, to dedicate to those those projects, designing new projects and having, you know, 100% designs. That's what they want for a lot of these new grant opportunities. So just wanted to make a note for you guys.
Yeah, that's good to know. Um, I think most years when we do CIP, we try to gently remind city council that without appropriate staff, uh, our best laid plans are hard to implement. So um, we will definitely keep that in mind as well. Uh, I thought I saw Ms. Weiss unmute. Yeah, hand up. You're up.
I'm using all the buttons tonight. Um, just just to add to the the equity lens, I think it's terrific that we're applying an equity lens to CIP projects. That makes a lot of sense to me. Um, and it it won't surprise anyone to hear that I support adding a climate lens to that as well. Um, you know, so I guess the question is, yeah, just, I would want to think about not just does it reduce our climate emissions, but there's the climate risk element of it as well. Like, is this preparing us for a hotter future? Or is this going to contribute to or help us manage, you know, increased precipitation over time? And are we prepared for shocks? So just gonna put, you know, offer that as something to consider as well.
Yeah, that sounds good. I mean, honestly, this is, I think this is something to talk about at our advance is like, I mean, this this will be interesting to see how we evolve uh, the way we do things to apply these important lenses to to everything. And I think, you know, we're kind of doing it ad hoc right now, which is great, but But, uh, hopefully like two or three years from now, it'll just be, oh yeah, everything comes through, we run through these really important things. Cause we're trying to make the world a better place. Um, and once we do that, we get into the specific stuff. Sounds good. All right, any other comments or questions before we wrap it up tonight, since we have to do this again next week? No, we're, we're all done. All right, well, it's great seeing you guys as always. Can't wait to see you in person someday. Maybe summer, maybe next fall. I don't know. Um, I guess that's it. Thank you, everybody.